Thank you, and thank you for opening the meeting. And we'll go first to public hearings. Nothing. All right, review of the agenda and perpetual calendar. So I'll do that on the agenda. I think the one thing, the family handbook, we're going to hold off again till the next meeting perhaps. On the perpetual calendar for February, they note the four town meeting between select board members, finance committee, many members and school committee members. So we'll report on that this evening. I put that in the section of reports. And the other thing is in February, there's a discussion of possible open seats on the school committee. So I'll speak for myself. I don't plan on running. So there will be that open seat. Steve, you are up this year as well, correct?
That is correct, and I am not running either. Well, so my, my nine years will be enough.
Okay, and was there anyone else? Julie, were you, are you up or no?
I'm sadly real fresh on the committee, so.
Awesome.
No, it's, we always just run against each other every time.
Or with each other.
I feel like, you know, Dan and Steve have been on here as long as I've been here and longer, but I feel the need to do Jackie's.
Yeah, this year's twenty years for me.
So is that, is that why you want to go out on a nice, even, strong number, Dan? Or do you just want to maybe spend some time up in, more time up in Maine?
You know, it's a number of reasons, but one is I feel really good about the Chutesbury School. The, I would say the culture that's been developed within the school. I love to see where it is academically, the social programs. I think the school committee is solid. I'm happy at school union twenty-eight with a really sound team. I'm also feeling really good about the collaborative. So, you know, like, maybe when Tom Brady left, you know, who should have left out on top, that's, you know, maybe that's what I'm feeling. Plus, I also serve as a treasurer for the East Hampton Chamber of Commerce, and I'm getting more involved there. I'll continue a little bit more doing some work with Moet, which is the Massachusetts Organization for Educational Collaboratives, just to help get things moving in that direction for the MASC, MAS, and hopefully MOEC conference next year. And because I'm a lifetime member, I can still sort of do things for MAS, Massachusetts Associations School Committees. And then, yes, I'm a president of a condo association up in Maine. We've got lots of plans going on there, so.
Well, I don't know, gonna be really hard without you two, so it's a little scary, but I'm happy for you both. But, you know.
I feel like if we're meeting in person by the time they're done, which I think we might, maybe Steven could bring us his famous cookies.
Yeah, we gotta have a little party or something. Yes.
Yeah. Gluten-free oatmeal, raisin, dark chocolate cookies are on the menu.
Amen.
And Steve has spent a lot of time at the region representing Chutesbury for, yeah, at least probably all those nine years. And it's been nice to have someone down there who's dedicated to our interests, fighting for our interests, and attending all of the meetings that are there. So, and you know what? You guys are great. You'll do well. I'll probably keep my eye on the agenda a little bit, just because there's a few things that I'm a little worried that might come back to haunt us, like the outdoor school. Just to make sure everyone's sort of on that same page of following protocols and what needs to be done with that, so. All right, so I see a hand up first, Suzie, and then we'll go to warrants.
Yeah, I just want to remember, remind people that recruiting is really important, and as town clerk, we worked on that, and you all know people in the community connected to the school, and it's really important. And I think there was one or two candidates that competed for the last time, so getting people connected is huge.
And something really, I just have to say this, though, yes, that we had some awesome candidates for the last time, however, both of those people are on sabbatical. So both of those people are not here at the present moment, but yes.
And I think it's good to let people know that the position is open, what it's about, but I've never really done too much with the recruiting. I think that's really important, that you get people who want to serve, who are interested in it, who, who have a passion for serving. Sometimes, you know, you don't, the last thing you want is someone with an agenda, but right now, things are running pretty smoothly everywhere, so I think maybe it'll be someone who's just has an interest, so. All right. Warrants. Steve, you want to go over the warrants?
I do. We got a list. Do you want the, the number, the date, and the amount in the day I signed it, or?
How about just the warrant number and amount?
All right. I'll do the payroll warrants first. Number three eleven, eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixteen cents. Trevor has all these already. Number three twelve, eighty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-three cents. Number three thirteen, eighty-six thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and sixty-eight cents. Number three fourteen, eighty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents. Number three fifteen, eighty-three thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty-four cents. Number three sixteen, eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-five cents. And number three seventeen, eighty-six thousand, sixty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents. And now for the accounts payable. Number three zero one two, ten thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars and nine cents. Number three zero one three, twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-six cents. Number three zero one four, five thousand, ninety-three dollars and eight cents. Number three zero one five, thirty-three thousand, forty-two dollars, thirty-four cents. Number three zero one six, fifteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty cents. And three zero one seven, forty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty cents, and that's all of them.
Trevor, you got all those?
Um, there's a couple I don't have, so could you give me the date on account, the three oh one seven?
Yeah, that's the newest one, that, the three oh one seven is dated to twenty-one, twenty twenty-three. Did you see, I sent them to you in an email around six.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
I can just get it from there. Hold on a second. Oh, there they are. Okay, I got them. Thanks.
Great. So let the record show that those have been submitted into our records. Thank you. Any gifts? Not one. Okay, grants? No. Okay. Now, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from January twenty-second, twenty twenty-three?
So moved. Second.
Awesome. All in favor. Haze I?
Rose I.
Martell I.
Sullivan I.
Great, thank you. I should have asked if there were any amendments. I did read through them. I didn't see anything. It all looked good to me. Trevor, you do a great job, so thank you. All right, unfinished business, capital projects. Steve, can you talk anything about what's going on there?
Yeah, so the buildings committee met on Monday, and we had received a proposal from Gail and Associates for, I believe, six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars or so for a new roof. And we, the buildings committee approved that, and we passed it on to the select board, who it looked like Melissa signed it, and Dan, you signed it. And it's sitting in the school committee mailbox, ready to roll. So now it's time to go out and find some proposals.
Right, and I think Jennifer, you had to sign that one. Is that the thing you had to sign? Okay. Excellent.
I did sign the electronic copy, but I haven't been able to get ahold of anybody to sign the wet signature one, so Pam and I are working on that.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I saw emails going back and forth, so. And then with the capital planning committee, are there any talks or discussions about the kitchen floor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, the capital planning, we met last night, and we just tabled the kitchen floor, because we don't have any quotes. We're waiting on Matt for that. But we're, we're looking forward to them and approving them, but we just don't have any. So we meet again on the, either March seventh or twenty-first, depending on when we get them.
Okay, so Matt is getting the quotes and notes.
He's gonna try, but it's, it's not like they can just happen overnight. So I think he does have one. I think he does have one, and it's from the place we always use, which is Summerland Floors. There's not actually a lot of places around here. So he's gonna try to get in, but he's also doing the entire phone system and everything else that's going on right now, so.
Good.
So we just, we discussed that last night, and Summerland always comes in way lower, so we're going with historic preference and just accepting the Summerland, although we have some, a couple of people would like to see more, but we understand that they're always the lowest.
It is good when you have a track record with someone that you've been working with in the past, so let's hope.
I mean, and over the past, what, nine years, we've replaced almost the entire school floor, and they've done a really awesome job. And they're like, tendable and fast and clean and kind, and yeah.
Awesome, great. And then the boilers, I believe, on the recommendation from the finance committee, the select board both voted not to accept the proposal for moving forward with the boilers, because I think it sounded like it was a much more expanded project than just what we were looking for, so. So that has been, so we're not doing that. And the boilers are in good condition, so I don't think we'll be doing anything with the boilers. There's nothing that's immediate or concerning. And after our last meeting with Nate Heard, maybe the energy committee working with the buildings committee can come up with a great renewable source for the future. All right, anything else on capital projects or building? Great. School choice funds, I think that's just been on there. I think we have a pretty good plan that we're following from the administrative team. That's been given to the finance committee as well. And we'll talk a little bit more. I think the finance committee was looking for some additional information, I think, kind of a historical pattern of how those funds have been used in the past. That was a discussion at the four, at the last meeting with the finance committee. And we are waiting to hear from the finance committee sort of more of what they would like for us or from us before we do anything, so. We'll wait to hear from you on that, okay, Suzie? Great, thank you. School safety features. Jackie, any progress on that?
Yes, so I sent you an update about the phones, so they're being installed over February break next week, I think Tuesday, Tuesday. And then we're gonna go live on March first, and we're very excited. And the new headsets are quite fancy, well, at least the office ones. But we're really just looking forward to working phones and the ability for caregivers to leave a message. And so we're really excited about that, and we really thank everyone for helping us get this pushed through pretty fast, but as you know, with Debbie Lee, push through with like really quality work put behind it. And so that's it with the phones, and now safety committee is kind of shifting our focus towards the cameras that we want. And phones were for the first priority and the first push, obviously, and now we're, we're pivoting, and Matt and Debbie have been in meetings all this week around some, around some video type options. And that's where we are. And when we have a proposal or an idea of, of where to go, I'll, we'll bring it here.
Great, I'm glad to hear that, and I do look forward to hearing more information on that. I do think it's important for a number of reasons, even for our superintendent to be able to look to see, you know, how that snow piling up out there. It is kind of nice to have that. Okay. New business, FY twenty-four budget draft. The administrative team, after having met with the finance committee and listened to their input, did refine that budget. Suzie, did you get that as well? Okay, it, it did.
Not yet. We weren't able to, to meet and finalize it until this afternoon.
Yeah, so Suzie.
Fresh.
Yep, so Suzie, just so you know, it was something that they've been working on. We did get it late this afternoon. I'm not even sure if all the school committee members have had a chance to look at it. But they did take into consideration some of the conversations that happened, so we'll be sure to get you a copy of that.
Great, and Caitlin can walk through the changes that were made in the budget today, if that would be helpful to committee members and, and the rest of the attendees.
Susan, you want to take it away?
Yes, please. Okay, can you see my screen all right?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll finish with the budget summary, but I want to highlight some of the changes to the budget. Line two, school committee advertising, we decreased from one thousand five hundred down to one thousand, because it's not typically a line that we, we use all of the funding for. The rest are, most of the rest are union twenty-eight lines that we can't touch, because that budget has been approved. All of the instruction lines stay the same, because most of them are salary-based. And without, you know, massive changes to, or any changes to personnel, we have to fund those lines for what their contract is. So the instruction line, the two million, forty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three has not changed. But line seventy-one, seventy-two, and seventy-three all have, for seventy-one health supplies, we decreased from one thousand five hundred to one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for special ed transportation, which is used occasionally, but it's not funded to handle if we were to have a out-of-district placement. It's just, that's not what the funding's going to there for. That would kind of leave us in a very different position, where we'd be having to find funding from a daily basis of, of special ed funding for special ed transportation. So we decreased that line from ten thousand to seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Line seventy-three, food service, the food service revolving, we are hopeful that it continues to be mostly sustainable, and we can decrease the amount that the budget allows to, for the general ledger to, to help out. Line seventy-six, fuel, that was our biggest. We'd originally budgeted for fifty-one thousand, trying to be cautious about, we've had a very mild winter this year. And with the uncertainty of fuel costs, we wanted to kind of put our efforts into raising that line to meet what could be happening next, next winter. But we've decreased it back down to thirty-five thousand from fifty-one thousand, so we decreased it by sixteen thousand dollars. Line seventy-seven, school telephone, now that we have a better idea of what those expenses will be, we decreased from six thousand five hundred to five thousand. And lastly, nine, line ninety-six, community services. Jackie and I went back quite a few years, and we're not sure historically why that line exists or what it was used for, because from what we can tell, it hasn't been used. And we're not sure what the appropriate uses would be for community services. Everything that is sort of, we're using right now to support our school committed, community that we have other lines for, so we've decreased that down to, from a thousand dollars that was never touched, to zero. So we were at a we go back up to the budget summary. We were at a five point one four percent increase in total uses of funding. We're down to four point one zero. We had a four point eight three percent increase for net spent, for the net total, so when we remove the grants, we're at three point seven two now. The budget went from two thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars, or two million, five hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and one dollars to two million, five hundred, sixteen thousand, five hundred and one dollars for the total use of funding, a decrease of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay. Hold on, real quick. Any school committee members have any questions regarding the changes? Okay, I just was looking at one, which was on my phone, so it's really small. So can you repeat that last net total amount, because I think I may have heard you incorrectly?
Oh, I was, yes, that was, I was stating the total use of funding amount, so the net total for the town would be two million, three hundred and thirty-four dollars, I'm sorry, two million, three hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Sorry, I don't say a lot of numbers in the millions these days. Budget meetings.
So Steve and I were at that meeting as well, so we listened to the finance committee. Obviously, you know that we do the best that we can to estimate. You know, we, we are a little concerned about the fuel. We don't know what's going to happen in the future, but we're hopeful that these changes are all going to be sustainable, so. Are there any questions from school committee members, or anyone for that matter? All right. Do we have a motion to approve the FY twenty-four budget and the amount of two million, three hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars, an increase of three point seven two percent? And say so moved, it'll be easier, I think.
So moved.
All right, do we have a second?
Seconded.
Okay, any other discussion? Thank you for your hard work, all of you. All in favor? Haze I?
Rose I.
Martell I.
Sullivan I.
Okay. And then I believe it'll be the next meeting, we'll have the hearing where public can come as well, and then we'll have that final vote then, or let's see if there's any changes, like, not a final vote, but the public hearing. Okay? All right, school improvement plan. Is on the agenda. Who wants to address that?
It's me. It's a draft, so it's not really, I'm just gathering feedback right now, because our school council wasn't able to completely finalize it because of some absences. So, but this is what we have as a draft, and I guess I'm just going to present it as feedback, and also because it's the work we are already doing. And you might just be interested in hearing about the work that we're already doing in the school, and yeah, so I, I shared with you the documents earlier, to, earlier this evening. And the way I organize the SIP is I have two goals, but like, major overarching goals, but then there's various action steps underneath, so it's really like one goal, but it has like five parts, and so the first one is SES SIP twenty twenty-three goal one. And I'm just assuming that you guys all, you're all able to kind of pull it up, because I sent it earlier today. Is that the case?
No.
I did share it with Martell J at chutesberryschool.org. I can resend it, or I can just share my screen if I can have access.
If you could share your screen, that'd be awesome.
Okay. Hold on a second.
It's how Suzie's anxious to see it, too.
Yeah. Okay, here we go. Uh. Share my screen. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Can you see this little bar here, or can I just see that? I'm just gonna move it. Okay. Um. And let me move this over, because I don't like that. Okay, so the first goal is under curriculum planning and instruction, and lots of places organize their SIPs in different ways. This is just the way that I feel like for the teachers and I makes the most sense, so. The area for improvement is curriculum planning and instruction, and our goal is to plan, implement, and assess an aligned, rigorous, and engaging curriculum, and to monitor the progress of our students in achieving proficiency. And the outcome would be that Chutesbury Elementary students will engage in rigorous, engaging, and aligned instruction, authentic and meaningful student assessments, and data-driven interventions to become proficient readers, writers, scientists, and mathematicians. And the first part of that is, and you'll see in here, like, there's hyperlinks everywhere that people could click to kind of get more information about the things I'm talking about, if you're not in a school or understand school words, is that we will provide and engage in rigorous, explicit, systematic, and evidence-based instruction at all levels of literacy development with a focus on phonics and phonemic awareness and the signs of reading, which is the, the hot topic right now in literacy education. And that SES will pilot a new a new literacy curriculum, it's called EL, in K through six this year, which is what we're doing. So you can see in the action step details that there's a link to that curriculum that people can, can look at, and it talks about all the steps that we're going to take to ensure that we're doing what we need to as a public school, but also what fits into our philosophies at, in our beliefs at SES in itself. And then if you can see, you can see all the resources we might use, but then you can see in the, over on the far side, this, it says that all curriculums are researched using Ed reports as well as a mass D E C curriculum tool like curate, and what that means is like, we don't want to just do something because we like it, or that we think it might fit into something that we need, but we, we want to make sure that, like, the top people in the field have really looked at this, and they are recommending it, or they also feel like it might be that it is a good tool for us to be using in, in twenty twenty-three. And so everything that we are looking at and piloting do fall very strongly in all of these. do fall very strongly in all of these places. So that's the first thing we're doing, and I'm not going to like read every bullet, but I'm happy to talk about it with anyone who wants to, and like I said, I don't, not really looking for a vote tonight, I'm kind of just like giving you a first look and gathering some feedback. So it feels like this is a lot, because the next thing is that we are researching and examining new math curriculum with a focus on adherence to math state standards, explicit instruction, number sense fluency, student practice, and intervention. And again, teachers are going to be piloting units from particularly two favored math curriculums this spring, and we're going to report our findings this spring, so it feels like a lot to be doing this, two major subject matters at the same time, but the pandemic really made us think and look about our curriculum, and the needs of our students, and also our, our shifting and changing world. And so, and it's, it's not just shootsberry, I mean, you'll probably hear there's a lot, lot, lot of districts doing the same work right now, almost every district in our union. And also, I have the most phenomenal teachers that I think I've ever worked with at shootsberry right now, and that, that is pretty, like they are incredible, and a lot of this work are of our teachers, our teachers invested in this, bringing these things up and wanting to engage and try it. So it's, it's coming as like a full ground up change, and certainly not a top-down change, which makes our culture and climate super exciting right now. I really, it's like we have masterful, masterful teachers really engaged in finding the best fit for our school and our kids, and it's really exciting. So anyway, the two, the two major curriculums that we're looking at, well, this was earlier in the fall, but we've kind of narrowed it down to one. But the two major curriculums that we were examining were the illustrative math and bridges math. And we've done a lot of work with this already, you know, really, our math coach, April Cannon, who had been our former third grade teacher for many, many years, has done a phenomenal job, helping, leading the staff through examining these, these pieces and looking at research. And we've really, as a staff, come to think that bridges might be a better fit for us. And so many of the teachers, I think almost every grade level at this point, is going to pilot one or two units from that curriculum this spring to see how, what they think and how they feel, I've already seen some doing it in classrooms now. And we're collecting feedback on that, and we're looking at student data, and then we're going to really talk about it this spring and into the summer to see if it's something we want to move forward with. So those are the two big, huge things that we're working on with a lot of enthusiasm. But at the same time, we're continuing to look at science and social studies. However, something really cool is that the EL curriculum infuses a ton of that into it, and so students are reading and doing reading units that incorporate science and social studies, so you're kind of grabbing both at the same time. Continuing our work with UDL and ensuring growth equity and access for all students. And then finally, the parents on this call will know, will see tomorrow that we are revamp, we are revamping and realigning our school report cards to be mass standards based with updated standards, including social emotional, mass, social emotional goals. Not started last spring, and it has continued into the fall, and it's a really big undertaking. We had to, we collected examples of standards-based report cards from across the state. We kind of looked at the language and the terms and the layout on all, how all of these schools have done it. This report card had been the same since I've been here, so almost ten years, and it was really time for a refresh, things have changed. And you know, we will always be like a standards-based school with a lot of narrative, because that's how our, our community is, and we, we love to be able to give that to our families. But our report card did need an overhaul, so we had to do the research of the standards, we had to do the research of the layout, how we wanted to grade students, we don't use A, B, C, D, F here in elementary school. We use terms instead about approaching and or on benchmark, things like that, and we've even had to tweak that. Then we had to actually mock it up and put it into our power school system, which is a whole other thing. And then teachers had to use them, so our first attempt is rolling out tomorrow with the families, and hoping to get some feedback on that. And of course, we want to edit and adapt them, if it's not providing the right feedback for families on their students' progress, then of course, we want to take a look at that and edit it to make sure that it does. Nothing is in black and white, we can always make things better, so. That's, that's the first goal, so like I said, it's a goal, but it's really like five goals inside one goal. And then the second goal that I have, I've organized into the frame of culture, climate, and community. And the goal for this one would be to promote students' creative and interpersonal skills and connections to community, and to foster a school environment of respect, kindness, and trust. And that shootsberry elementary students will engage in meaningful and varied creative opportunities for learning and expression. And the school community will operate in a culture of respect, kindness, and trust. So I have three major goals, we have three major goals in this goal, three major action steps. The first is to continue our implementation of our social emotional curriculum, choose love, and infuse it with PDIS, which is positive behavior intervention and supports best practices to create school-wide expectations and celebrations. And so we've already been in the process of doing this, again, these are things that we are already doing. And you know, something I'm really proud about in shootsberry is that one hundred percent of our students have tier one, which means everyone has it on a base level. Tier one access to our school counselor or psychologist every week, because those are the people that get into the classrooms and teach our social emotional program, choose love. And it isn't just choose love, they do infuse best practices and all, and other things too, but it is our base. And it makes a huge difference in culture for that, for that to happen for students. And then we've already, I think I've already presented them to you, we do have our school expectations. Choose respect, choose kindness, choose safety, choose love, which I presented to you, those are the four school-wide expectations that we use across settings, and so what that does is it helps have consistent language with adults and students on how to address behavior, on how to address any other kind of expectation that is going on. And we infuse that into all of our school assemblies, we now have a moose mascot that helps teach some of these expectations, we have a sixth grade leadership team that helps teach those expectations. And, and it really develops kind of an even playing field for everyone in the school, because we all understand the words and expectations that are needed to be having a great and safe time at school, so. Let's see. SES will continue our work in diversity, equity, and inclusion by examining our curriculums and resources, and providing explicit and targeted PD to staff. And that is also already in the works, we have collaborated with the collaborative. And all staff is taking a social justice and equity in schools course right now, particularly leaning into important conversations that need to happen as we all grow our understanding in anti-bias and anti-racist work. Examining our curriculums and classroom materials for bias, and examining our new curriculum in, in, in particular to ensure that we feel like it's socially just, anti-bias, anti-racist literature and lessons. And then, one of my things, things that I think is the most important is that shootsberry is going to continue to offer a variety of enriching joyful, in, in capital letters, joyful, creative, expressive, and leadership opportunities for students to experience and grow from. And you know, the pandemic put a little damper on some of the special things that make our community really important, and they're starting to, they are coming back to life, which is, which is great. But the joyful piece of school is one of the most important aspects for me as a school leader, and I want to really make sure that there's stuff that make all of the kids feel like there's something that they can be great at, try at, succeed at, feel seen in, and, and offer their specialness to the community, so. That's that third piece. So I am going to stop sharing. So that's the draft of our SIP. And yeah, that, that's kind of where we are right now.
Okay, so you ready for input questions?
Sure, yeah.
All right. Who would like to start?
I'd like to just share that I've been here eight years, and it's so nice to see all of the principals working together to tie their school improvement plan to our district strategic plan, so it's a lot of work, and it takes a lot of collaboration and communication, but I'm really proud of that work this year.
Jen, Taylor.
Thanks, Dan, Jackie, I first of all, want to say how much I love our school culture and how, I don't know what we're going to do, we're not at SES anymore. I know.
I don't want to think about it.
I know.
I've known that for a long time.
I know, I, I also, I'm just wondering about social justice curriculum in general. I know that some teachers really put a hard focus on it, and others not so much, and just like wondering where we are at standardizing some social justice curriculum, and if we've considered doing any kind of intergroup dialogue or something more dynamic in the way of social justice. And I know we had talked about maybe doing like a Spanish story hour at lunchtime or something like that, of course, pre-pandemic, and then the pandemic hit, so it didn't ever really get fully implemented, but I think it'd be great to get something bilingual going on at the school if possible.
Yeah, um, yeah, the, the wanting to incorporate language is a, is a thing that comes up. I mean, we had a little break during the pandemic, but it is something that I hear from people, you know, not infrequently. And money is a tricky thing, but we, you know, we did have several staff members that had some abilities with some language pieces that we were going to try to infuse that, and that's something that I can, you know, bring back. We have not, we have not approached it again, we've been digging ourselves out of the hole, but we're, but we're feeling a lot better now. So it's a time where that could maybe happen. In terms of the curriculum as a staff, and when I interview people, there are questions about diversity, equity, inclusion that we ask, because it is as a, as a staff community, that's one of our major priorities at school. So people know when you're hired at shootsberry that that is what the, that's what our philosophy is, we do engage in a lot of conversation about it. And then even at the union level, that's one of our major goals too, and so it's part of the work that we're trying to infuse down in the PD, and having the teachers do their, do their own self-work around that, you know, so that they're able to lead it in a comfortable way, because the adults want to know, like, I'm not sure what terms to use, like, what do, how do I say that? Like, how do I address these things when they come up, you know? That's the work that they have to do as adults, but as in terms of curriculum, I really suggest you look at that EL curriculum link, that's, that's, that you'll see. One of the reasons why our school was so attracted to that curriculum is because of their, their infusion and dedication to social justice. And so a lot of the units are around that, and that's one of the reasons why we're really interested in going forward with that, and it's just really good stuff, but that is one of, I hope that answers your question on that part. There's always, there's always a lot to learn in that section, Jen.
Steve, you had your hand up first?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Okay, Suzie?
I wonder with bringing on different curricular systems, I don't see anything in the budget to fund materials for materials, is that true?
Yeah, things are different nowadays, and when we, when you order curriculum, you don't get like two hundred hardcover copies of a textbook, right? So what's, what's different about curriculum is that, yes, there might be supplies that we need to buy, like multiple copies of books and things like that, the actual resources are oftentimes free, or you have to pay for the teacher manuals. So for example, EL, we pay for professional development to learn about the curriculum, and we pay for the books that we use for the kids to be reading, and we do pay, you know, some sort of fee for the teacher additions and things like that. But we're not, it's not the same heavy lift as you know, giving all of the kids like a textbook and giving all of the kids that type of thing, it's, it's a little bit different. So there will be some sort of cost for both things, but because the bait, like for, for bridges too, it's, it's like to get access to some of the curriculum, it's, it's free. For a lot of the materials, you do have to pay for it, however, we have a lot of those materials, they're just not like labeled bridges, you know, we have blocks, and we have you know, base ten cubes, and we have clocks, and we have, you know, all of these things. Will there need to be a little bit of funds to get some stuff, and yes, but we already have built into our budget the money to buy our student activity books and to buy, you know, the updated version of this tech piece that we use, because it's all, a lot of it's tech-based too, in terms of slides and things that teachers might use to teach a lesson, so. It's not the same thing like it was even ten years ago, Suzie, where I'd be like, I need twenty-five thousand dollars to do the new thing of, you know, investigations. It's like different, which is a good thing. So that is why you don't see the increase in that, because we can feasibly do it. Essar did help, because I did buy some things with Essar this year.
All right, well, I'm going to make a few comments myself. It's a great plan. I really appreciate seeing such a thorough plan of curriculum as well as the social and emotional piece. And the other pieces, which I think kind of ties into really what Jennifer brought into Union Twenty-Eight, which is universal design for learning. So it's nice when you are approaching things as opposed to a change. It's a continuous evolution and a process of living these things, you know, so I think that's great. Jennifer, you did answer my question about the union, I think it's great that each school has a lot of autonomy. I think it's great if we can learn from each other, and perhaps, you know, look at who is utilizing things in a, in a better way or more efficient way, or, or having better results, and it's good to compare and contrast. I had two sort of questions, well, I, I also wanted to say, I appreciated the part about the teacher's support, because that has been sort of the culture at the shootsberry elementary school, and it is nice when, when there is change in administration that the new administrator realizes that it is done differently here, and that's why it's successful. When you have people who are in the trenches, you know, working with students and involved in all of this, getting the professional development that they can bring forward the curriculum that they think is ideal. So obviously, our students segue into Amherst, is there any alignment there, or?
Um, so Amherst that we can understand does not have the same literacy program in every building, so everyone's doing something a little bit different. A lot of them are still utilizing the, the teachers' college reading and writing workshop, which we had utilized in the past. Doing something a little bit different. Um, a lot of them are still utilizing the, the teacher's college reading and writing workshop, which we had utilized in the past. But with the new research coming out, that's totally not the best fit. Um, and we were already feeling that anyway as a school. Um, and we were leaning towards more towards the EL um lens of things. In terms of math, they're using, um, oh no, I'm gonna forget, I forget the name of it right this second, but it's um. It has a huge computer base to it. Um, and a lot of schools are using it. Springfield's using it too, and I don't know how I'm blanking on the, Jen, do you know the?
Is it open source?
No.
No.
Um. I'm sorry, I'm blanking on the name right now, but the, the benefit of it when you have a large school district that particularly might have a lot of ELL. Um, students, there's a real benefit to having a big computer-based aspect to your math program because. In a teacher shortage or um, if you don't have uh, the, 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 the human power to be able to get to certain things. The computer thing feels a little more safe. Um, it's not only computer, but it's. There's like a large portion of their block on a computer. Then there is some teacher instruction, obviously. But as a school, uh, we didn't feel comfortable with the tech. Piece, though we do have, as you know, we utilize tech in school. It's important for students to have those skills. Um, it's really engaging for a lot of kids. They need to be able to test on a computer. They need to just have. Those skills in this world. We weren't like, ready to have a lot of our instruction focus go towards with tech. Um, so um, we really appreciated the Bridges um, curriculum more. So, so no, it is not the same as Amherst. Um, uh.
And, and I think we have to be for sure. I do think that sometimes it is nice that there's some sort of um, continuity, but I don't even know how you do that, but. I'm happy to hear that we are doing what we think is really best in terms of curriculum and not trying to match.
And the thing is, Dan, is that particularly our sixth grade teacher is like hyper focused on the Mass State standards. And our, and our feeling is, is that if our students know the standards inside and out. Then they should be able to go down into seventh grade and have the skills they need to be able to do well. And obviously, as you can see, we score decently in math and so um, particularly in the upper grades, so um, they do have the skills they need. Hope and hopefully it will be able to, to, to marry in down the hill um, in a, in a good way.
I do have one more question, but Steve, did you have the answer to what?
Oh, he might, he might know the curriculum.
I don't know the curriculum, but I, I was super excited in twenty nineteen when we got rid of IMP. And went to this new one, but it turns out that partway through the first year of the pandemic, the math teachers. Threw it out because it was terrible and they've been flying by the seat of their pants trying to come up with. New, new things since then on their, on their own and their work, they're working through it, but yeah, that whatever that was is gone.
Yeah, um, and Steve, I was talking about the elementary school. They have something different, but the middle, the middle school, we did ask, we just sent. I think an email this fall that said, can you please tell us what you're using so our sixth grade teacher can? Look at it and look at the language and. They had a hard time telling us what exactly they were using. It kind of felt like it was a little bit of a hot, a hodgepodge going on.
Yeah, that's why, but the, it was set up so six to eight had one curriculum. Because you know, they, they were prepping to get their sixth graders into the middle school, but yeah, it's a, it's a hodgepodge right now.
Great, thank you, Steve. So Julie, before I come to you, I did want to ask my question, which is all related to sort of the math piece of this. And I know that we have invested in a math coach uh, for a, a number of years and uh, is that a full-time position?
No, it's in the, in the original budget, I think it was a point five or a point six and then remember I came and I asked if I could use. Point. Whatever of this, of, to make it a point eight so that I could, I wanted her to lead this work in particular. She also does math interventions for kids who need it, so it's not. This is not just all, she also works with kids all day, so I needed. Someone to also help lead this. Um, and so that's why I asked for it for that temporary time.
Believe we went from a point six to a point eight using that point two difference in school choice money.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, and uh. The math coach is um, obviously involved in this process of looking at the new math curriculum, is getting training and or whatever and.
Yeah, she's, she's leading it.
Awesome.
And actually, the math leaders and the other buildings in the union are calling her to talk about it. She has a lot of knowledge and she's put a lot of time into it.
Great, thank you. Those are all the questions for me. Julie, you had your hand up for a minute, anything?
I just wanted to say experientially as a parent, I have two ten-year-olds in fifth grade, we're so excited about their. Uh, civil rights, like living history situation that they like. One of them came home today and like read out her speech and like has outfits planned already and. Is so excited that she was like, is it allowed for us to work on the speech with you over the February break? And I, I'm pretty sure they'd be happy about that, but yeah, we can definitely work on it. So they're, they are both joyous and so excited about that kind of thing, so I'd like double thumbs up from us.
All right, any other questions or comments, feedback for Jackie? Um. I don't think you were expecting to vote this evening, but I'm prepared if someone wanted to make a motion to accept the grant plan as presented, obviously. Uh, Jackie, I know that any input moving forward, whether it be between now and the next meeting or now and the next six months you would take, so.
Yeah, definitely.
I'll make a motion. To accept.
The school improvement and as presented?
All right, yes, the school improvement plan as presented.
Excellent. And Julie, you seconded? Okay, just want to make sure we got that. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, is I?
Rose eyes.
Great.
Martella.
And as I mentioned.
All of an eye.
Thank you, Steve. As I mentioned, family handbook is not going to be discussed tonight. And then as far as reports, I'll just start off. I think we've already talked about the four towns report. Uh. I'm sorry, the finance committee report. The other report I wanted to talk about real quick would be the four towns and that's related to the region. Steve, you were at that meeting as well. Is there anything that you want to say or just cap it off real quick?
Yeah, I, I was really happy to, you know, we're, we're struggling to come up with a contract with the APEA. In the three schools and, well, three districts in Amherst. And I was really happy to hear that all four towns strongly said that, no, that they, they support the school committee and saying, no, we don't have the money.
Right, so um. We uh, as four towns looked at the Amherst regional budget. Um, the budget has an assessment piece, which is something we've talked about for years, which is using the state. Uh. Method with some modifications, which are called guardrails, which prevent uh, sort of an overamounted of percentage. For towns um. And everybody seemed to be in agreement with the final numbers and the assessment method that we were using. This will be the second year in a row that we're using that method. And so um. That all went pretty well. And what uh, Steve is alluding to is they're, they're in contract negotiations with their teachers. Um, and I think where it stands is the, the teachers are looking for a pretty significant increase. Um, and the towns were not really prepared for. The amount of increase because they were talking and Suzie, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but they were talking in the millions.
Yeah, it was, it was over two million more. But I, I do have to say that though, that meeting was amazingly smooth and. That with Schutze break, you know, what we've been asking for for a long time. That it, it was nice to see it a second year in a row, but in the guard, the, the guardrails are a nice added benefit too.
Yep. Great. So any questions in that wor- area? All right, yes, Suzie?
I, I, I think also there's um. The governor's budget won't be out till March first. I don't think there's gonna be a lot more money. Um, and I, I understood it was a million dollar. More would be needed for the salary proposals. In this. Coming year and then it goes to two million after that. And so unless. Major funding streams change, those were numbers were too hard to wrestle with, especially because we have a lot of capital expenses. On the plate and so um. It, not all salaries would have gotten um, a step raise, so for some people it really was looking at two point five and when we have. Um, social security going up eight percent, that feels really hard for people to not be going up more than two point five. Some people have step increases, so they'd really be going up more like four point eight, I think they said. But not everybody gets those step increases, so these are hard times and um, you know, I'm hoping. The governor is working on some funding. I don't know that it'll make a difference for Amherst.
Okay, thank you. All right. Superintendent's report.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Um. Just as a, a thank you at this meeting, the Union Twenty Eight budget was approved at the end of January and I really appreciate all. Of the work that our joint supervisory committee members go to. Um. And the time and attention they pay. To crafting that budget. Um. Caitlin and I, along with principals, continue to work on budgets for all four schools. We're in different places with different towns. And we've either had our planning meetings um, with select board and finance committee members as well as public hearings. Um. A couple of weeks ago, Aaron Saunders, who's the state representative for the Seventh Hamden District. And that district serves Belcher Town, Lethlow, New Salem, Pelham, Peters, Petersham, Schutze, Bray and Wendell. Reached out to me um, to discuss the PFAS issue we have at Swift River School and he visited Swift River along with um. Quite a crowd from Boston. We had people from the DEP um, and a lot of other folks from Boston and um. It was nice to hear along with Joe Commerford that um, Representative Aaron Saunders is eager to assist New Salem, Wendell and Swift River. In addressing the PFAS issue. We continue to do um, newsletter outreach from the Union Twenty Eight perspective. We send out. Our monthly central office newsletters to staff and committee members. And um, Union Twenty Eight does an update quarterly to family and community, so we will continue to do that, to share. News both at the school and union level as well as the state and legislative level. Um, looking at DESI, I submitted our rural school aid reports uh, at the beginning of February. I do those reports, as you know, one for each school. Um. When we start thinking about efficiencies in Union Twenty Eight would be ever so nice to do one. Uh, maybe with four subheadings. Um, also. Student Opportunity Act is um. A plan that we submitted. Um. Way back in January of twenty twenty-one. Um, and then last April, we had to submit. Comprehensive um, amendment updates to our original plans. Both of these were shared at school committee meetings. Um. And now we are looking at um, the Student Opportunity Act progress report and we will need to do an extensive report to DESI on our progress in implementing our plans. And then next. Spring, we will be asked to submit new three-year plans. Um, you know, many school districts received more than one and a half million dollars and. They have extensive reporting. Um, we didn't receive. A lot of increased chapter seventy funding with the Student Opportunity Act, although we did receive some. Um, but we are still doing the same kind of progress reports for DESI. Also at DESI, um, in looking at special education, they have what's called the IEP or Individualized Education Plan Improvement Project. And this project comprises a suite of resources and support for schools and families. It includes guidance on student referral, evaluation and eligibility. And then they will be updating the new IEP forms and also offering technical assistance to support implementation of the updated forms. Um, there's going to be a process guide with instructions to go with those new forms. Um, as well, parents will get an updated guide to special education. Um, there will be a playbook to support collaboration between general and special education teachers and our director of student support, Karina Whistlow. Um, has been attending webinars along with her assistant Jen Spofford and they will be sharing information with our student support services liaisons. And lastly, at the state level, the readiness and emergency management in schools center. Provided some virtual training this week on school behavioral threat assessments. Um, and so lots going on at the state level, uh, lots going on in our districts and um. I attended a staff meeting with um, our curriculum coordinator, Lindsay. Rodriguez and she just did a wonderful job in talking about curriculum and implementing curriculum and. One of the topics that came up was the exciting visit. That other Union Twenty Eight schools had at Schutze Berry Elementary and people were really just buzzing about the visit. And ways that they could implement what Schutze Berry is doing.
Great. So just a quick question, so when you talked about the um. IEP, is Ginny Tate involved in that? I know she used to be.
Yeah, I don't know if she's doing any of the webinars uh, through DESI. I know it's been um, DESI personnel that Karina's been working with. Um, but ours, our legal counsel is still um. Murphy Hessy, Toomey and Lehane. We um, work with Alicia Saint Florian and I'm sure she will be as. Of assistance too, but we, Ginny still does our updates to special education law and five oh fours. Um, and we typically try to attend it. It's um, full of information and Ginny has just a great way of presenting information that keeps you engaged on a rather dry subject.
Great, thank you. And any other questions for Jennifer? All right. Uh, Director of Finance and Operations, Caitlin.
Hi. So we're still in the middle of budget season. Um, most of us have been very busy with internal meetings about the budget, school committee meetings, finance committee meetings. Select board meetings. Um, for the first time, like I was, I was always looking forward to February break when I was a teacher. Because I got the week off and now even though I'm working through the week, I'm really looking forward to February break because I don't have any evening meetings. And that feels fantastic for a week of, of nothing at night, so. That will be a, be a nice little break and then we'll jump back and back into it. I've been completing the AAC claiming forms for Medicaid reimbursement for the first and second quarter of this fiscal year. Schutzer's, Schutze Berry's report is almost complete. I'm just waiting for some information from the town and then they should be. All right to receive their, their reimbursement for Medicaid. And finally, our bi-weekly grants meetings have turned into weekly meetings. Usually it was um, me accounts payable and. Who covers the S R grants. Um, and it made Jen Spofford and Karina Whistlow and Lindsay Rodriguez, we would all get together and talk about the grants. And we decided to hold them weekly and have our principals invited one at a time, so Jackie was sort of our, our kickoff event of having. The um, having our first principal in and it went really well and it was, it felt like. There, we'd always talked about grants and talked about the schools, but we never included the school itself. In a way that we could just sit there candidly and have a conversation about, you know, what amendments we might need to make and. Where we could adjust some of the inducing journal entries, so. It was really great. It felt like we didn't understand that there was a missing piece to the meeting until. We started having the principals and then we realized it was always a missing piece of the meeting, so we're really excited to continue the meetings. Every month, every four weeks, we'll rotate through each of the principals and include one of them at a time. And I'm also finding that meetings with the schools, even though we're Union Twenty Eight and we work with four schools. Trying to have meetings with four schools at a time with unique different parts. Is not always as effective. Is not always as effective as having one meeting with one principal or one school or on one part of it. Where we can talk directly about um, about the needs of that school. So one of the things from the grants, you'll notice um, looking at the expenditure report, which looks. Pretty good and what we would expect. Is the instructional supplies line has gone over, where we have some plans for some of the. Uh amendments, the grants to be able to, to cover that. Any questions or comments about my report?
I don't. Anyone else? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
President's report.
We've already heard me talk a lot tonight, but I will just. Uh, say a few very quick things. One.
We love to hear you talk, Jackie.
Yeah. Okay, um, so the first thing is, is that um, we just. We decided that the artist in residence this year is going to be me and our music teacher, Mike Cortina. Um, and uh, we're doing a full school play that Mike and I are directing together. And I think the parents on here have probably heard about it. Um, and it's called Pirates and it's like a forty-five minute musical. And the entire school is involved in various ways. Um. Mike's going to be teaching the music and music and then I'm going to be doing the rest of the shindig and uh. The kids are very excited about it. I've done this play with. You know, lots of, I've done this three other times in my career, so I know the play very well. And um, and it's very sweet and cute, but what it means is that uh, that is going to be our artist in residence. It's going to be our major focus in the spring. We are gonna ha, we are gonna perform it for some of our sister schools in the union. They're gonna come and see it. Um, and then we're gonna have a nighttime performance for the families, obviously. Um, and I'm gonna need, you know, community support with some of the costumes and um. But it's gonna, we're gonna rent a backdrop of a pirate ship and it's gonna be really fun. Um, and the kids are very into it. So um.
Is this primarily Gilbert and Sullivan?
No.
Is that what's happening?
This is, this is very elementary school musical.
It's Cortina and Mendon.
Very model of a modern.
Jack, you are amazing.
Thank you, thank you. But yeah, no, it's, it's not gonna be that level. Um, but our littlest kids are gonna be the fish in the sea and then. Starting in first grade and up, they're pirates, but you know, some, you know, for example, like Bethany's kid's gonna be a parrot. You know, there's like a lot of, you know, kids had a lot of say in what they were gonna be, so they're all excited. See, that's the key. I'm like, you want to be a dog on a pirate ship? You got it. You want to be a crow? All right. So um. So that was really funny. Anyway, so that's something to look forward to. Um, and then like Jen said, you know, we've been. Doing a whole lot of work in curriculum at Chutesberry. Um, and we are really. Further ahead in our E L A work that we're doing, our literacy work. And we had on Monday fourteen people from across the union come and observe a le, an E L. Lesson um, in a, in a classroom, some targeted. Uh, phonics-based work in a, in a classroom, an intervention lesson and then a kindergarten lesson. So they observed four different things and also our push-in model of intervention where our. Reading specialist pushes into the class to support the class instead of pulling kids out. Um, and then we had a debrief um, with those people. And so it was from like eight twenty until noon. Um, on Monday and it was really awesome. And we got to highlight all the work that, that we've been doing. The phenomenal teachers that we have, but then we also said, this is not like a finished product. This is us just. Trying things out and seeing what works for kids. Um, and the, and the, our colleagues from across the union really loved it. And we loved learning from them and showing them what we've done too. So it's been, it's been really great. Um, M C A S is coming up, so that is, and like I always say, we do not teach the test, but we do make sure our students are prepared for the test. So it's not a scary thing. Um, we don't spend the year, you know, with M C A S practice books or we don't do anything like that. Um, but around this time, we do start to practice a little bit about what the passage might look like. What is the vocabulary that might be used? We might do a few practice things on the computer, so they're, they're understanding that they all take it on a computer, how that works. Um, we do some writing responses, typing, just to make sure we're, we understand what word count means and how we have to add punctuation and all of that. So that's starting. And then I just wanted to do a quick shout out to our P T O. We've had some really fun events in the past. Um, bit of time, we had a co. Um, event with Leverett Elementary School down at the Mullins Ice Skating Rink. Um, that was really well attended and really fun. They had an event at Quarters this past week and then they're working on a soup and games night that's gonna happen in March. So um. I really appreciate what they do to help us have that vibrant community that we were missing for a long time. Because of the, the big C. And uh, that's, that's all I have for you.
Jackie, do we have a date for the Pirates play?
We don't because I don't know exactly how much time I need, but, but beyond that. Sixth grade has a lot of events and sixth grade has a lot of the lead characters. And so I, I just have to make sure the events are like. Mapped in a way where I'm gonna be able to have. What I need from them. So it's either gonna be the last week of May or. The second week of June. So be, just because of things that are already planned. So we're still trying to. Hammer it down, but I'm gonna try to hammer it down soon.
Just keep us posted. We'll see it in the road town, I'm sure. Any questions for Jackie? Okay. Amherst Pelham Representatives Report. Anything to really report there, Steve?
I'll keep it quick. We are only meeting, we've been meeting once a month because it's budget season and the region with the other two. Districts have a lot of work to do, but we did approve a new school calendar for next year. And there's one big change that. Amherst is now gonna have their once a month early release day on Friday. So it will no longer coincide with Chutesbury and Leverett's Wednesday. So that takes care of that whole big mess of. Trying to get the buses lined up on that day. And I think that's it.
Okay.
Oh, and we're still pushing forward with the um, the turf field. And Suzie, we understood when we came up with that proposal last. March that um, those CPA funds could not be used for the actual turf. But they can be used for drainage and grading and those kind of things, but they would not be used to purchase the actual turf.
I know that turf is uh, there's a lot of feelings behind that turf.
Well, it looks like at this point that they're gonna ban it for a lot of issues, but the one thing that's gonna remain standing is high school athletic fields. They're not, they're gonna, that one's gonna be, get a pass.
Okay. Any questions for Steve? All right. Union twenty-eight, I think uh, Jennifer, you sort of hit it. I don't know if there was anything else.
No, just that we have an upcoming meeting in March.
And I don't have anything to report from the collaborative. Okay, moving on, uh, first reading on uh, policies, D G A, D H. D I. I think that's an I. D I E, D J, D J E, D K. I guess I'll defer to the committee. Do you feel you want to read through each one here? Or do you feel comfortable reading them at home and sending in any? Okay. All right. So we're gonna move to the next section, which is the second reading. And I believe on this one, we're going to also be voting. Doesn't say that, but. Right, Jennifer, do I have that right?
Oops, and yes.
I just want to make sure. So let's um, to make this easy, easy for Trevor. How about uh, Julie, do you want to make motions and Bethany can second and we'll do that on each one? Okay. All right. So um, go ahead, Julie.
Let me unmute. Okay, um, I move that we. Accept the grants proposals and special projects, D D uh, policy.
Second.
Okay, and discussion. Okay, all in favor? Is I?
Martella.
Rose, I.
I love an eye.
Okay.
Okay, I move that we um, adopt the budget deadlines and schedules, the D B C policy.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Is I?
Martell, I.
Rose, I.
Taylor, I.
Perfect.
Okay, I propose that we adopt the budget planning, D B D policy.
Second.
Yeah, you did.
Any discussion? All in favor? Is I?
Martella.
Rose, I.
Taylor, I.
I love an eye.
Uh, for a twist, I'm going to suggest that we adopt the budget adoption procedures.
Second.
D B G, right? All right, any discussion? All in favor? Is I?
Martella.
Rose, I.
Taylor, I.
I love an eye.
Okay, and to complete my power play, uh, D B J, Budget Transfer Authority, let's just go ahead and adopt that.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Is I?
Martell, I.
Rose, I.
Taylor, I.
I love an eye.
Special shout out to the Policy Committee. I work with, they're so easy and collegial and collaborative, yay. And thank you Caitlin for coming to our exciting policy meetings to help us through our fiscal policies.
Yes, thank you.
There are some serious barn burners.
So that said, we have the next policy uh, committee on Thursday, March sixteenth at six thirty, followed by the school committee at seven. Union twenty-eight will be on March twentieth. Okay. Anything else this evening? Okay, that said, uh, this meeting is adjourned. You all have a nice evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Bye.
Good night.